... Major Hall, real quick. Roll call play.
Alex, Mike, Eugene Davis. Here. Mary Tiny. Here. Right foot.
We never get anybody like this in here. On behalf of the mayor, the mayor has been here tonight. He's very subtle. He could be his father's heel and he wants to see him regret if he's not here. Him being a former player myself, Pyke, we've got two coaches here as well. We're proud of both sides of the girls basketball team. Not girls basketball, but the football team. That sounds a big job. Y'all understand. I'll be very brief. When I read the proclamation, it will be something that he... I just want to say one point thing. When I played back in the day, as they say now, it's been quite a few years ago. We didn't have really junior high bro. You went from Woodley into JP. You talked about not tough, having to play against your old days. Think about that next year going against or this year going against high school guys. So it's a great program and I'm so proud of y'all. And when I started, when the girls started back, playing basketball in a setting, same way, there was a lot of anticipation and a lot of programs. Our program has been anything for the girls basketball program, idolizing it. With that said, we'll read the proclamation. First for the girls junior high basketball team and coaching staff for the 2011 championship season. Whereas the 2011 Pyke girls junior high basketball team did compete and through team play did have an outstanding season. And whereas the 2011 Pyke girls junior high basketball team did compete in 2011 Pike County championship game by having a bye in round one, playing early in round two, and becoming victorious with a 32-30 win in a region. In round three, being victorious with a 34-32 win over the road, running the 2011 Pyke girls junior high basketball team, Pike County champions. And whereas the 2011 Pyke girls junior high basketball team, achievement as the 2011 girls junior high basketball Pike County champions, not only brings honor and recognition to the team and its coaches, but also brings great honor and recognition to their school and citizens of the city of Pyke, Kentucky. And whereas the 2011 Pyke girls junior high basketball team shall hence therefore be well-known city and countywide as champions and with most of its accomplishments is worthy and being honored and recognized by the board commissioners of the city of Pyke. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city of Pyke as follows. That the 2011 Pyke girls junior high basketball team, Grayson Barley, number 34. Cindy Libson, number 13. Bailey Joe Stiltner, number 11. Tiffany Lynn, number 31. Rebecca Diamond, number 21. Bailey Nunamaker, number 2. Cassidy Call, number 32. Hannah Keane, number 33. Emily Hughes, number 12. Bethany Smith, number 24. Rachel Diamond, number 22. Sharitha Horton, is that correct? Number 14. Angela Easted, number 5. Katie Stone, number 15. Savannah Webb, 25. Bridget Pennington, number 4. Brittany Thacker, 10. Emily Thacker, 42. And Destiny Ratliff, number 23. Coaching staff, head coach Misty Parater and assistant coach Steven Brewer are by these presents duly honored and recognized by the city of Pyke for their 2011 Pike County junior high championship title. That because of each lady's outstanding performance of excellence in basketball and as a citizen of Pyke, they are hereby appointed and designated a special ambassador of goodwill for the city of Pyke and the Pyke City Commission who further orders that that entire month of November 2011 be set aside and designated as Pyke Junior High Panthers Month in the city of Pyke in order to honor such a great accomplishment. For these outstanding accomplishments by team and coaches set forth here on, shall be recorded among the records of the city of Pyke by the clerk of the city so that others that come here after will know their excellence in basketball. Adopted by the Pike County City Commission this 14th day of November 2011. May I have a motion please?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any questions or comments?
I've got a comment. All you girls are so pretty you could be easily confused for cheerleaders.
I just heard that story just a few minutes.
But I want to congratulate you. You've just added to a rich, winning tradition that Pyke has and this is something you'll remember the rest of your life. And I probably, Commissioner Lane will probably want you to win a state high school championship in two years. So get to work.
If we've got some more folks out in the hallway, if you want to make your way up, we've got some room up here for you. Just folks to stand if you'd like.
I'd like to add to what doubt Barry Runyon or Chaney had to say. You know, this award, you probably don't know how much this will mean to you later on, but I can tell you anytime you win an award like this, when you're my age, you look back on it with great pride. And I want to congratulate you for that.
Likewise, I'd like to do the same thing. Congratulate you on your accomplishments and this is just some of the early accomplishments that you're going to do. I know if you can do this, you'll be doing many, many things. And so I wish you the best in everything you can, love yourself and stuff.
Can I have the coaches come up please? All those in favor of the motion on the table? Signify by the saying aye. Those opposed? Motion pass.
Have the commission come around, present the proclamation to the coaching staff. And also on behalf, here is a copy of the proclamation signed by the mayor for each member of the team and the coaching staff. Would you take care of that? to do is after the second proclamation is read, then we're going to invite both teams outside onto the front lawn where the Pyke City Hall sign is, where we're going to get some pictures of the commission and the team together. And then we're going to bring you back inside, let you come up the stairs, form a line, let you come upstairs, come back around, and we've got food to feed everybody here tonight. Okay? Next.
Excuse me. A proclamation in recognition and honor of the Pyke Junior High, Pyke Junior High School Football Team and Coaching Staff for the 2011 championship season. Whereas the 2011 Pyke Junior High Football Team did compete and have an outstanding season with a record of 15 wins and only two losses. And whereas the 2011 Pyke Junior High Football Team, their group team play was undefeated in Pike County. And whereas the 2011 Pyke Junior High School Football Team did compete in the 2011 Pike County championship games by having a bye in round one, playing Pike Central in round two, and becoming victorious with a 38-0 win in round three, being victorious with a 6-0 win over Belfry, naming them the 2011 Junior High Football Pike County Champions. And whereas by the 2011 Junior, Pyke Junior High School Football Team, achievement as the 2011 High School Pike County Champion, Junior High Pike County Champions, not only brings honor and recognition to the team and its coaches, but also brings great honor and recognition to their school and all the citizens of the city of Pyke. And whereas the 2011 Pyke Junior High School Football Team shall hence therefore be known city and countywide as champions and with such an accomplishment is worthy of being honored and recognized by the board of commissioners for the city of Pyke. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city of Pyke as follows. That the 2011 Pyke Junior High School Football Team, Casey Tackett, Cody Charles, Zach Thacker, Austin Little, Dalton Stiltner, Robert Johnson, A.J. Vanderbeck, Austin Ratliff, Evan Hall, Derek Pugh, Kitten Hall, Blaine McDonald, Austin Sayers, Andrew McNamee, Clay Sloan, Cody Diles, Jonathan Ray, Logan Jones, Blake Charles, Christian Johnson, Colby Ratliff, John Williams, Nash Holbrooks, Nathan Camp... I'm sorry, Campoli, is that correct? Cody Harris, Jordan Shaw, and Gunnar Edmonds. Team manager Zach Burgess, coaching staff head coach Shane Hensley, and assistant coaches Bob Sherliffe, Jody Brown, Jeff Root, Brandon Akers, Nick King. Are these presents duly honored and recognized by the city of Pyke for their 2011 Pyke Junior High School County Championship title. That because of each gentleman's outstanding performance of excellence in football and as a citizen of Pyke, and hereby appointed and designated as special ambassadors of goodwill for the city of Pyke and the Pyke City Commission who further orders that the entire month of December 2011 should be set aside and designated as Pyke Junior High School Panthers Month in the city of Pyke in order to honor such a great accomplishment. That these outstanding accomplishments by the team and coaches set forth here above shall be recorded among the records of the city of Pyke by the clerk of the city so that others that come hereafter will know their excellence in football. Adopted by the Pyke City Commissioner, Commission this 14th day of November 2011. May I have a motion please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? It'd be a miss if you didn't say so.
Well, I'd like to congratulate, I'd like to congratulate these folks, the achievements they've made and they're really outstanding. And they're not quite as pretty as the girls, but they are handsome.
I'll tell you what, football's hard work and a lot of times you're out there and son, jumping that blocking sled around, somebody hollering at you, that makes it pretty tough. But I tell you, when you win a championship, it's a big payoff. Makes it all worthwhile though. So look forward to seeing you fellas win another one.
My name's Gene Davis. I used to coach at Pyke back in the dark ages. I played there my last two years, with Jenkins High School, the first two years, and I came to Pyke. Moved here on Saturday, school started on Monday. And the coach saw me walking around, he said, "Son, you play football?" And I said, "No." And he said, "Where are you from?" And I went through the whole spiel. He said, "Do you like to come out for football?" I usually don't let somebody come out this late, but since you've transferred here, you're welcome to come out. So I went out that day and I stayed out there for two years. But the first year, when I got out there, they put me on defense, that's what they usually do with a new guy. I looked over and I didn't know it at the time, but on the offensive line, in one back, they had three offensive linemen and one backfield guy that was veterans of World War II. And here I am out there playing against those guys, two of them had been in battle, a lot of it. But anyway, they were fairer to me than anybody else on the team. But still, I will never forget the time that I played those two years at Pyke. And I had the privilege of coaching them as assistant coach for about three years. And then I became a head coach when, you ever heard of TD? What does that stand for? TD's Sporting Business. What's the T for? Trevy. John Bill Trevy. The D is for Charlie Deacon. John Bill was the basketball coach and Charlie Deacon was the football coach. They quit during the middle of football season. Right smack in the middle of the football season. He was four and one and winning sporting good business. I took it over. We finished up four and one, played in a bowl game over at Harlem College at Black, the Black Diamond Bowl, which is cold. And we played a team over and I think we beat them something like 13-6. Bill Barrett, anybody heard of Bill Barrett, the attorney? Bill Barrett was on that team. I can mention the other guys, but I don't want to take the time to mention all those names, but I'm sure all of you have heard of Bill Barrett. And I want to congratulate you. And I know it's, Mr. Chaney said that football is a tough sport. And you know what? Cheerleading is a tough sport. There's people get hurt in that. In basketball, people get hurt in basketball as well. So anyway, but I want to congratulate you on a fine season. Thank you.
I know we're running short on time, so I just want to ask congratulations again to both teams and ask for a vote this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? I can have the coaches up here for the presentation and then everybody can run outside and let's get some pictures before it gets too dark. Consider a request to adopt minutes of the regular commission meeting held on October 24th, 2011 as submitted and authorize the mayor pro team to sign and execute said minutes.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments on the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Business from the floor?
First item we have is a consideration of the Good Old Boys Car Club to address the city commission. We would invite our guests up to the podium to do so at this time.
The, if you would, I'll speak first.
Speaking to the microphone.
The, just to start this off, from being the city's director of events, muscle man when it was first formed in July of 2009, come on board and with Commissioner Chaney and Commissioner Carter and the entire commission's approval and help and the guidance I've been under under city manager Blackburn, we formed a partnership with the Good Old Boys Car Club, who is a local car club here in our area and pretty much covers the majority of the county and actually some members probably outside the county as well. So we've had a tremendous success. We come off 2010 being enterprise of the year and we couldn't do that, of course, without the car club. So here tonight to represent the car club is the vice president, Clay Bevins.
I just wanted to tell you, it's an honor to be here to talk to you tonight about this car club. We've really enjoyed this thing since we got it started with the city's help. It has been growing. You see what has happened. We plan on this year being even more. We've got a lot of plans coming for the year 2012. And at that time, I think you're going to see a lot of improvements, you're going to see a lot more people in town. It's just going to be good for the city, it's going to be good for our car club. And we just want to make these gentlemen here honorary members of the car club in nice little plaque. We just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for us and anything we can do, we will definitely, be it, anytime you need something, just let me know what you want the car club to do. Jesse and I work real close together and we'll definitely build this thing into, we're calling it a little Somerset, but we're going to make it a bigger Somerset before it's over with.
Well, Clay, one thing I'd like to see the car club do, and you in particular would be, watch me drive off in your Viper.
That ain't going to happen.
That ain't going to happen. You may get a ride, but you can't drive.
On behalf of the city commission, certainly want to say we appreciate it. You know, when I came on board with the city commission back in 2004, Mayor Justice at that time had talked about this organization. I actually had the opportunity going up to the windmill and had dinner one evening. And we talked about this event at that time. But here we are almost seven years later with not only an event, but an award-winning event. The Kentucky League of Cities has honored the city, for many venues, including this one. This event's getting recognized, not just in eastern Kentucky, but all over the state. And we look forward to next year. Each year, you guys do a wonderful job of improving it. I know Jesse, we put in great hands with him and making sure it's organized well. And I think the last event we had, we probably had close to eight to 10,000 spectators with a lot of other things going on. So it's good for the community, good for the club, and definitely good for the city. So we appreciate all you do as well.
Thank you very much. And that's what we feel about it. The club members feel the same way about it. Working with you all, we've, both of us, it takes both of us to make this thing really grow. And we plan on really working this year and showing you, by the end of this year, '12, we're going to show you it's going to be a big one. Okay? Thank you very much.
I can see why they call you all the Good Old Boys, Clay. Everybody I've met down there has been just a tremendous fella, I'll tell you.
We think we've got a good club.
Just a great bunch of guys and do a lot of work.
We got the good rules and regulations in the club and no bad language, no drinking and things like that. So you know, we're kind of family oriented, okay? And it's working out great for us.
At this time, we'll ask that Commissioner Chaney come forward to accept his honorary membership from the vice president from the car club.
Very good. Enjoy working here. Get it better. Good, good.
Commissioner Davis?
Davis, I'm getting clamped with all these other guys right here. Me and you're going to get clamped, okay?
I'd like to make a comment. I think I see a guy I know back there. Jenny, is that you?
Yeah.
Gravy's son. Too glad to have you here.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Give me. Give me a break. Yeah, absolutely. Work quickly on what we're going to continue to do.
Yes, exactly.
All right.
Commissioner Ollie?
I never knew that. Being a member of that club.
Good old boys.
Yeah, good old boys. Let me say something, Clay. If you can take us something, we can help you all make it better. The city would like to help.
Thank you very much.
Bring it to...
We're doing the same thing. Working together, we're going to accomplish it.
Right. So thank you.
Glad to do it. Do you just sit still? I'll take you.
You're a fan. Okay, bud. I appreciate you all of you. It gives us a chance to present these little things to you.
Just in honor that we're going to make you an honorary member of the car club. And anytime it's our club meetings and we're having them, anytime y'all want to come in and sit in one of the meetings or bring some ideas to it, tell Jesse or just come on in and meet with us. We meet the first Tuesday of every month down at the windmill. And we do that because of the space. We'd rather be meeting here in town, okay? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have from business from the floor would actually be a motion that we would ask to consider first before the, we need to take the official act prior to actually taking, presenting the check. So I would ask the commission at this time to consider a motion to establish an award granting to the Hibbly Christmas in July organization of some of $20,000 to be used for the purchase of playground equipment for installation in the RB soccer park playground and to authorize payment of said grant.
So moved. Second motion.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion pass.
Do you have anybody that can hold a voice? On behalf of the city of Pyke, the city commission would like to present you this honorary check for $40,000.
We like that.
Thanks.
Jimmy, would you like to approach the podium, say if your words...
Well, you know. There's no doubt in my mind. You know, I really appreciate this and you know, with the help of the city, city commissioners, the mayor, you know, this has been one project that has totally been a group project by everybody. This thing has started out as just a dream, I guess, of building a handicap playground and Don was right there when we first started it and it's come a long way. And hopefully by summer of next year, we will have this thing finished and we'll move on to another project. What we'd like to see is more of this type of playground throughout the city and the county and the state. So this is just a step that we're taking and if you haven't been there, you need to go and touch this playground. It's something special and I think our kids will really enjoy it. And hopefully in the future, more playgrounds will be kind of working toward the way that we built this one. So I really appreciate it because it has been a community effort in what we've done here and I really appreciate it.
Jimmy, with that said, I want to take the opportunity to thank you and for your vision and your hard work. I know that your cohort and partner in crime at the time is no longer with us, but his memory has not been forgotten. Of course, we're talking about our good buddy Randy Jones and all that you and he did to get this movement started. We greatly appreciate it. We appreciate the hard work of all the volunteers and the board members. We have a great time, not only bringing awareness for the Shriners kids, but also getting in there and getting a little work done and bringing forward some money to give them a place to play and to act and have enormity. But I'd also like, not to steal your thunder, but on behalf of myself, I would like to thank the city commission for allowing me not only to participate, but allowing the city to grant a very nice piece of property and a very prestigious park for this playground to be located in and also the legislators for this part of the contribution, the city commission for the contribution. But I'd also be remiss to leave UMG out, Rick May and his group, who not only cooked here tonight, as UMG always does, they step up and help, but they contributed in the neighborhood of about $25,000 to $30,000 in labor cost to put this park together. And what we thought was going to be a very simple project ended up not being.
Yeah, you know, when we first started this, we looked and said, "Well, you know, $100,000, we can build this playground." We were looking, you know, for grants, you know, and stuff for $100,000. And we're right now sitting with over $150,000 in it just from us and you're talking about you guys with another $25,000, $30,000. We're probably looking at about another $80,000. And happy to say that the Kentucky Colonels came through and we received a $15,000 grant from them. So that's going to be a rockin' ship is what it's called. And we have ordered that and everything's in place for it. And we're just terrible at that with their name because it's just like we said, it's a community project and everybody's really worked. It's just no one person or one group has done anything. Randy's with us.
He is. He always will.
Don, can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
There's no expression that apples don't fall too far up in the tree, something like that. And the reason I say that is because you're a dad. Great. And it just thrills me really, deep down, it really touches me, that you're picking right up where your dad left off.
Dad had some small feet, now it's made huge.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, next item from business from the floor, I have two proclamations honoring two new businesses within the city of Pyke. The first one reads as follows. City of Pyke, office of the mayor proclamation, greetings to whom all these presents shall come, know thee that on August 5th, 2011, is hereby proclaimed in Pyke, Kentucky to be east Kentucky auto world grand opening day. And I urge all citizens to observe this special recognition. If so passed on this 14th day of November.
So moved.
Yeah. Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion pass.
Next item I have is a proclamation from the city of Pyke, office of the mayor, which reads as follows. Greetings to whom all these presents shall come, know thee that on August 4th, 2011, is hereby proclaimed in the Pyke, Kentucky to be Route 21 grand opening day. And urge all citizens to observe this special recognition. If so adopted, again on this 14th day of November 2011. If so, adopted, again, on this 14th day of November, 2011.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
If I would, my apologies, but there was supposed to be a group here, but due to business, they were not able to make it, but passed on a press release and asked me to read it before the commission. And in essence, I'm doing an unveiling of a special project that will commence the first of the year. The press release is from H&amp;W Management Group and reads as follows. H&amp;W Management Company of Lexington, Kentucky is proud to announce a new hotel to be built in downtown Pikeville. The new hotel will operate under the name of Hilton Garden Inn and will, I don't see it, join the Hampton Inn on Hamley Boulevard. This eight-story facility will have 114 guest rooms and amenities such as HDTV, wireless internet, and a fitness floor. The top floor will feature a 5,000-square-foot penthouse. Plans for the 80,000-square-foot facilities includes an American Grill on the first floor, which will be a full-service restaurant serving America's fair. The hotel will have approximately 7,500 square feet of event and meeting space, including 2,600 square feet of suite and office, I'm sorry, outdoor event space on the rooftop. The location of the Hamley Boulevard in downtown Pikeville will be convenient for both business and leisure travelers. The hotel is within comfortable walking distance of downtown Business District, East Kentucky Expo Center, City Hall, Judicial Building, and the University of Pikeville, and will also provide convenient access to Pikeville Medical Center. Community leaders have expressed a concern because of receiving frequent calls regarding the unavailability of hotel rooms due to market demand. Regular business travelers understand the need for additional hotel rooms in Pikeville. According to a 2001 study completed by the city of Pikeville, area hotels have occupancy rates of nearly 100% during weekdays. The study also indicates that the new hotel is anticipated to successfully obtain its own market share. Additional guest rooms are needed to accommodate the significant growth underway by Pikeville Medical Center, University of Pikeville, Justice Center, expanding restaurant options such as Texas Roadhouse, the coal and gas industry, and additional retail developments such as those recently announced on Thompson's Road, to name a few. There's also increased demand based upon expanding entertainment offered at the new Jenny Wiley Theater Facility, including events of the East Kentucky Expo Center, a revised Pikeville Pike County Artisan Alliance, and expanding community events including Muscle on Main and Main Street Live. The hotel will also support the East Kentucky Expo Center by providing lodging availability necessary to host top shows and conferences. As a result of the hotel shortage, management has been unable to meet the demand of some promoters to guarantee a minimum number of rooms. The new quality, state-of-the-art hotel will provide much-needed resources to promote and ensure the success of this facility. The city of Pikeville Mayor Frank Justice and city commissioners greatly supported the H&amp;W Management Company during this planning of this event, project. Without their support and the local business, community leaders, this project would not be a reality. This is another great example by the city of Pikeville Commission where local government has partnered with private business in order to fulfill a great need of our great community. The city supported this project in many ways. A lodging study was updated by the city of Pikeville in August of 2010 to provide the support, the financial support information necessary to secure the financing for this private organization. The agreement regarding parking for Hampton Inn was expanded to accommodate the additional facility. Zoning Atlas was amended, and the alley was redirected, and the city of Pikeville is partnering with H&amp;W Management Group for a small utility project that will start soon. In addition to supporting local business, the hotel will support the city of Pikeville by contributing to the local tax base, funding services that provide economic growth. The facility will contribute to the property tax, hotel bed tax, restaurant tax, occupational tax, and fees for the parking usage, generating a significant amount of tax base for our community. These cause help fund tourism initiatives, including the East Kentucky Expo Center, Jenny Wiley Theater, Pikeville Tourism, and the Convention Bureau, and parking, garage maintenance, and much more. This is an official press release that was released, again, today on November the 14th. I read this only on behalf of H&amp;W, who, again, regretfully was unable to be here tonight, but wanted me, to the commission, asked to extend their appreciation and thanks for the partnership in bringing this magnificent facility in conjunction with the Hampton Inn. So at this time, at their request, I would unveil the design for the first time of the new hotel. Ladies and gentlemen, with the press, I have a copy of the press release. Next item I have is consideration of a resolution. Bear with me just a second. Which reads as follows. This is a resolution granting authority to sign and execute an agreement between city of Pikeville, Mountain Water, for the sale or purchase of wholesale water. The undersigned certifies the filing resolution was presented to the Pikeville City Commission by the review and approval for the said resolution was adopted 14th day of November, 2011. Whereas the city of Pikeville, Kentucky, Mountain Water District of Pike County, Kentucky, does hereby approve and authorize the attached wholesale water contract, and whereas the Pikeville City Commission fully authorizes to support the contract on behalf of the city of Pikeville, which is set forth by rules, regulations, and price, and sale or purchase of wholesale water by the city of Pikeville to Mountain Water District. Now therefore be resolved that the Pikeville City Commission hereby approves and authorizes marriage, sign, and execute wholesale water purchase contract on behalf of the city of Pikeville as attached and submitted to terms and conditions set forth by the first day of January 2012. Would ask for you to pass the resolution.
Get a motion on that.
I'll move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
The only comment I'll make is, is that currently the city has a five-year contract with Mountain Water for the sale of our wholesale water. We have, there is three of those five years will elapse by January 1st. We've extended it by an additional three years to go as part of the revised contract. The purpose of that is, is that, as the city commission may be aware, there was a billing error by the city of Pikeville, and it was an honest mistake. However, because of the financial position and our working relationship between the city of Pikeville and Mountain Water District, we do not want to put any undue hardship or burden on the water district. So therefore, in a spirit of cooperation, we ask that the Mountain Water District, instead of paying the city those dollars that would be due, instead, we simply ask for a stability in the contract by extending it by an additional three years, giving us a total term of five years. That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passed.
Next item I have is under the same issue. I would ask for consideration, request, and accept an agreement and all terms set forth therein and submitted between Mountain Water District and city of Pikeville dated November 14, 2011, addressing customer data transfer, billing, and service disconnects, and other various miscellaneous provisions, and to grant authority to the mayor pro ten to sign and execute said agreement on behalf of the city of Pikeville.
I'll move.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
The only comment is, is that, again, this, what this is, is that we have a mutual agreement that if our customers don't pay, that we would agree, where we have a separated system where they have sewer and we have water, or vice versa, that if somebody doesn't pay their sewer, then they would cut off the water and vice versa for us. If somebody on their side doesn't pay, that we would do the same for them. There's a fee associated with that, but what that does is it allows those fees that are owed to the taxpayers, obviously, by the utility systems, allows us a mechanism to be able to collect those due payments.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passed.
Next item I would have is consideration. This is a resolution establishing economic development loan program, setting criteria for qualifications for an economic loan, providing purposes for which the funds may be used, and to authorize the mayor or mayor pro ten to sign and execute said resolution. The purpose of this is, is, well, I would ask the commission, I'll explain it in the second motion, I would ask this commission to adopt this resolution as submitted, as described.
I'll move.
Second motion.
Any questions or comments? Are you going to read this one, and then there's another one that I just...
No, the next one I will. Yep.
Were the comments...
I'm allowed to go with summary.
Okay. All right. Do you want to discuss that on the summary of the second one?
Yeah, I'll discuss the first one as part of the second one.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passed.
Next item I have is a resolution awarding economic development loan to Alpha Natural Resources or its affiliations or subsidiaries, location establishments, and office within the corporate limits of the city of Pikeville. This resolution I will read as follows. It is hereby resolved that city of Pikeville is followed. City does hereby grant to Alpha Natural Resources an economic development loan in a sum of $175,000, no interest, to be repaid in equal monthly payment installments over seven years. Two, the loan funds shall be used for the sole purpose of office conversion, enlargement, repair, modernization, development, and purchase of equipment, machinery, or to make leasehold improvements upon property, and to be used within the corporate limits of the city of Pikeville. Number three, that in consideration of this grant, Alpha Natural Resources or affiliates or subsidiary will relocate a business within the city of Pikeville, which will employ on a full-time basis 40 to 50 employees. Number four, that in the event of Alpha Natural Resources closes or relocates its office prior to the expiration of seven years from this date of loan, the remaining balance of loan will be due immediately. Number five, any overdue payment shall bear the interest of 8% annually until paid. Number six, the mayor of the city of Pikeville is authorized to execute any and all loan agreement notes, agreements, or any documentation established loan provisions herein upon approval of the city manager and the city attorney. If so, adopted on this 14th day of November. Discuss as soon as we open up discussion.
You need a motion on that.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say something quick. I know Donovan's going to... Okay, that's fine. Before, because I need to explain before that you want the definition. Alpha Natural Resources, as it has been noted, has been within our market for the past several months, working with both the city and the county to look at trying to find a location for them to move their headquarters into. What the intent of this is, is through negotiations, again, with this group, is that it was deemed to offer an economic incentive because of the importance of bringing and keeping the coal industry, as both the county and the city both agrees. With CAM located here within our, the city, with several coal mines located within the city also, and being the largest coal producer, coal-producing county in the state, to be able to accommodate and to continue the expansion of this business is very, very important to this commission. Now, with that said, the reason I wanted to explain it before Commissioner Carter spoke was, is, the intent is, is we set up an economic development committee, organization which in turn allows us to then disperse these type of loans in order to recruit these type of businesses. In order to pursue Alpha in bringing them into our community, they are working with another local business. So our intent is, is to try to pave the way for them to work with another local business, which is with the Huffman's, the owners of the Landmark, that they are a very valuable business to our community and trying to work with them as this commission is, I won't say required to do, but it's what they were elected to do, was to represent each and every business. So this is a way to not only create a new business within the community, but also work with an existing business long-term. With that said, this does not guarantee, I just want it very clear, that 100% that Alpha Resources will be locating. This is the economic incentive that gives them the right to locate, and at this point, we are probably 90% certain that they will. However, there are still some things that they have to do with the property owner, obviously. Before that they can move forward to do that, the city commission has to pass these resolutions, setting up this organization and making these incentives. So, again, I just want to clearly state it that, you know, though we're extremely pleased to work with the industry, we're extremely pleased to work with the county, because in speaking with the county judge, he's as much in tune with regardless of where it's located, whether it's in Pike County or Pikeville, and again, almost because on behalf, having a organization like this located within our county is very important to Pike County's growth, and in this case, the city of Pikeville's growth, and in this case, also the opportunity of helping another business within the city. So just before anybody spoke, I didn't want anything taken out of context, I wanted everything clearly understood, that, you know, this commission, though, they're 90%, or this organization, 90% certain that they could move in, there's other things that could happen that may dissolve this agreement, but this commission is very supportive of this organization, very supportive of economic development and growth, and in tune has, or in turn, rather, has created these, this direction with ordinances and regulations to welcome them and offer them hopefully to our community. However, if they elect to still go somewhere else and remain in the county, we support their initiative, that initiative full force. We just want a part of our community. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that everybody understood that before any other comments.
It's not a problem. I just want to know how, just let everybody know how hard that Donovan and several other people, the Huffman's, have been working on is to try to get Alpha Resources here in Pikeville. Donovan, what was it, 40-some jobs, 40, 50-some jobs? And these aren't low-paying jobs. These are, these are middle-management, upper-middle-management jobs, so there's some pretty good salaries involved in this. So it's very important, you know, like Donovan said, we're 90, 95% sure it's going to happen, and it will be a huge win for the city and for the Huffman's as well. So we, that gives them opportunity to lease that their building's up there for long-term lease, and it helps increase our tax base here. So just want to say thanks to Donovan for his hard work on trying to get them here. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passed.
Next item I have is along the same lines. This is a resolution offering an economic development tax incentive to Alpha Natural Resources or its affiliates or subsidiaries for locating their establishments within the city corporate limits. Reads as follows. The city of Pikeville Commission fully supports the economic opportunities to bring new businesses to the region by providing services and opportunity for business to locate within the city of Pikeville corporate boundaries. This creates new jobs while injecting new payroll into our region, allowing our economy to grow stronger, which benefits those who work, live, operate, or own businesses within our community. Whereas the city of Pikeville does offer an occupational tax rebate towards Alpha Resources as a payroll tax incentive, as allowed under Kentucky state law for its, in order to incentivize them to locate their offices within the city of Alpha corporate limits. Whereas the Pikeville City Commission fully supports the coal industry and understands the benefits of having Alpha Resource office located in the city of Pikeville, and therefore extends such an incentive in order to attract and retain business in our great city, county, and region. Whereas, as permitted by the KCED and under KRS 154.24, Section 1.10, under the Kentucky Job Development Act, and city commission is granting the city administrative authority to offer the occupational payroll tax incentive as follows. The first year, they will pay 1% occupational tax, second year 1.25, third year 1.5, fourth year 1.75. By the fifth year, they will be up to the maximum of our 2%. Whereas, in consideration of this incentive, Alpha Natural Resources or its affiliate or subsidiary relocates business within the city of Pikeville, which will employ full-time 40 to 50 employees. Whereas, Alpha Natural Resources is a dynamic company that offers great paying employment opportunities, is the city of Pikeville Commission's pleasure to offer this incentive in order to support job growth within our region. Now therefore be resolved by the Pikeville City Commission is in full support of this resolution and hereby formally offers a payroll tax rebate as described herein, and furthermore authorizes the city manager and tax administrator to execute any and all required paperwork necessary to execute said rebate. If so, adopted on this 14th day of November.
I'll move.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Again, I defer to my comments prior. The intent is, is obviously to offer the incentives in order to relocate, or to pull this great organization into our community in the support of the region, and, which will obviously generate additional tax base for the city.
Yeah, I'd also like to mention as well, you know, it's, we would do this for any, any company that would be willing to locate that's bringing a tremendous amount of jobs to the area, to, into the city. I mean, that we've done in the past, and we will continue to do something, do that to increase our businesses in the city of Pikeville.
But I think this demonstrates a commitment of this commission and city manager to expand this local economy and to continue the growth of Pikeville. And a lot of reasons that Alpha Resources and a few of these other businesses want to come here is because of what we've done in the past few years.
Agreed with that. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.[1778.87] Those opposed? Motion passed.
City request to approve memorandum of agreement and MOA between the city of Pikeville and the department of local government as submitted for the receipt for funding for the coal service project, A362, for one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and authorize mayor, mayor pro ten, sign, and authorize MOA.
What is that?
Stormwater separation.
I'll move.
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second, questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed.
Next item is city request to accept and approve all terms and conditions set forth in the submitted request and resolution regarding the funds administration of the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, and authorize mayor to sign and execute said documents along with any additional paperwork necessary to execute. Scope of work includes installing a generator at floodgates, funding which would include fourteen thousand dollars with no match. Would ask the commission to approve.
So move. Second motion.
Got a motion and second, any questions or comments?
Yeah, does that need to be signed by Jimmy or?
Yeah, it'd be the mayor or mayor pro ten.
So this is, this is a grant that, from Homeland Security that we, it's, they're paying for everyone?
Yeah.
Sounds good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed.
Next item is city request for city of Pikeville to submit the 2011-2012 Safety and Liability Grant Application to Kentucky League of Cities for the purpose of purchasing twinned surface for the special needs playground, and authorize mayor to sign and execute, or mayor pro ten, said application, and any additional paperwork necessary to apply or receive said grant, or funds for said grant.
So move. Second motion.
Got a motion and second, any questions or comments? I also have a comment, if you've not stepped up on that play surface up there, it's something else y'all need to walk up there, that's like falling on a feather. So it's really neat. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed.
I just want to recognize Brad Hall and the chamber, the regional chamber now. We'd like to thank the chamber for all their hard work, was participant today in a very, trying to think of the word to use, creative, I guess, panel that was put together, educating a lot of our local talent and leadership on all the opportunities and things that are going on in the region. So we certainly appreciate our good friends here tonight, supporting not just the city, but supporting the region and all of our efforts and initiatives to create new development. So Brad, Tracy, we really appreciate you all for being here. I know there's a lot of hard work that's gone into all the things that you all have done. And with that said, we're going to go into a, it's going to be a little unique tonight, we're going to go into a closed session for some discussion, for a very short discussion, and then we're going to come back out of closed session, and then we're going to go back into closed session. And the purpose for that is, is that I know that it was on the agenda, and most of you know, and I'll give him certainly before he leaves, the opportunity to address the crowd if he wishes, but a good friend of mine, that's become a good friend of mine, Neil Wilson, who's sitting in the corner back there behaving himself, is with Realty Link, you've seen his signs up on the property behind Walmart, so there's a couple of items I know that's on the agenda that several of y'all have some interest in. We're going to go back and discuss a couple of things before we come out and we take action upon those items. So at this time, I would pursuant to KRS 61810, would request a closed session for the purpose of discussion of economic development issues involving the city of Pikeville.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and second, any questions or comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Do we need anything?